Can we get everyone's attention, please? We're going to start the meeting soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the commission meeting of Thursday, October 9th, 2025. I would like to call this meeting to order number 2025-1009R.
My music selection tonight was "Intriguing Possibilities" by Trent Reznor and Atticus Rose. The next city commission meeting on October 23rd, 2025, the music selection will be made by City Attorney Pyburn. As we begin, we kindly ask that all mobile devices be silenced. To ensure the best sound quality, please speak clearly and directly into the microphone, and remember to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Should anyone experience difficulty hearing any time, please raise your hand and a hearing device will be provided to you. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Commissioner Brody.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Here.
Mayor Riley.
Here.
Deputy City Manager Stoudemire.
Here.
City Attorney Pyburn.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
To the fact of the United States of America, each republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted live with a physical forum present. The material for today's meeting is available online at coconutcreek.net. Anyone wishing to appeal any decision made will need a record of the proceedings, and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim recording of the proceedings is made, including the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. The archive of this meeting may be requested from the city clerk or may be heard online at coconutcreek.net. If you haven't already, please silence your mobile devices. If you must take a phone call, please excuse yourself and step outside. Respect and proper decorum will be maintained throughout the meeting. Vocal outbursts, jeering, cheering, or applause can impair the rights of others and derail the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of presentations. It is with pride and honor that we are having a ceremony recognizing the promotion of Police Officer Andrew Rena to Sergeant. Chief, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk. I'd like to call up soon-to-be Sergeant Andrew Rena to the dais, please. All right. So let me tell you a little about Sergeant Andrew Rena. His journey in service began in 2007 when he enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. He was assigned to Combat Logistics Battalion II and deployed to both Iraq and Afghanistan, where he managed multimillion-dollar budgets and supported frontline operations. He was honored to receive the Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal for his innovation and work ethic. In 2013, Sergeant Rena transitioned into law enforcement with the Seminole Police Department, and in 2015, he proudly joined the Coconut Creek Police Department, where he continued to serve with pride and purpose. Over the years, Sergeant Rena has done his best to lead by example, whether working high-level operations like Turnpike West, helping the homeless outreach team, or contributing to the multi-agency gang task force. One moment that stays with Andrew is when a suspect stole a purse from an elderly woman. Although we arrested the suspect, we couldn't locate the purse that day. The next morning, Andrew retraced his steps and found it on top of a school roof. That experience reinforced for him the importance of going the extra mile for those who count on us. Today, Sergeant Rena serves as the sniper team leader on our SWAT team and as the field training officer and training coordinator. In those roles, he has had the opportunity to revamp our field training program, raise performance standards, modernize firearms training, and lead major equipment upgrades. He has also worked to secure grants, update lesson plans, and create tools to better prepare officers for the challenges they face in the field. Andrew has never taken for granted the responsibility of ensuring our officers are trained, equipped, and ready to protect our community and each other. As Andrew takes his next step as police sergeant, he does so with gratitude and focus. He has faced adversity, including surviving several gunshot wounds in the line of duty, and it has only deepened his commitment to this profession. He is proud of the work we've done and the direction we're heading. Sergeant Rena is excited for the opportunity to continue serving, to lead with integrity, and to help build an even stronger Coconut Creek Police Department. Here to support Sergeant Rena are his wife, his daughter, his father and stepmother, his father-in-law, and other family friends. So at this time, I'd like to call his wife to the stage to pin him. You're allowed two pokes. Got it? Did you get a picture? Commissioners, would you like to join them for a photo? There we go.
I can't see your face. I can't see your face. Thank you.
Alexis. And any family and friends that want to join him? Andrew up there. Mom, Dad, Larry? All right. And then everybody from Coconut Creek Police Department that would like to join him up here for a picture.
Who's the little one is here? All right. Okay. That's great. The city is grateful for every one of our officers. Thank you so much, and we wish Sergeant Rena the best. Stay safe out there, and God bless. Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Commissioner Rydell, would you please read the proclamation? Then it will be presented to former Commissioner and survivor Becky Tule.
Whereas October marks the annual observance of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer to ensure the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month message is heard by thousands of women, men, and their families. Whereas the American Cancer Society estimates more than 316,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in the United States in 2025. And whereas through research and advocacy, significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including significant decreases in mortality during the past two decades. Whereas early detection, finding cancer before it spreads through self-examination, clinical examination, and mammogram screening saves lives. And whereas when breast cancer is detected early and is in localized stage, the five-year survival rate is 99%. Whereas the more than 4 million breast cancer survivors living in the United States today are a testament to the courage as well as the importance of promoting awareness about breast cancer, providing information, funding, research, following recommended screening guidelines, and offering treatment to those who are affected. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Commission of the City of Coconut Creek, Florida hereby proclaims October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Coconut Creek and encourages all residents, employees, and community members to come together to celebrate and honor those who have fought the battle. Signed by the mayor, the vice mayor, the city clerk, and attested to by the City Commission. It would be an honor to present this to Becky, who obviously, Commissioner Brody, you're going through something. Commissioner Tule, I'd ask you to come up because I'd like to present this to you. Commissioner, former Mayor Tule was integral in my wife's fight. She was at my house weekly, supporting my wife. My wife is a big supporter and has done everything she can do. I would like to say more, but it's just difficult. We have a cancer walk coming up in Boca, and the reality and the message that I've learned is early detection saves lives. Get your mammograms, get checked up, make sure, and you check on people, and you stay healthy. And Becky, please, if you want to say anything, I'm happy for you to do that, and I'll then present the proclamation to you. So please, former Mayor Tule.
Well, I'm 12 years survivor, and I know I know that I still, even though I'm a survivor, and as is to anybody that's had breast cancer, you still have to self-exam. You still have to go to the doctor. You still have to have your mammograms. But I'm damn lucky I can. And there's some people that, when I was going through that, that really helped me out. One of them was Avon, John Hartzell, and Mary Blasey. And my family was in Ohio, so I'm sorry. Coconut Creek was my family for this year that I went through all my treatments and stuff. And I'm damn lucky to be here, and thank God. But everybody, including men, check yourself, because men do get breast cancer. And yes, I still am helping everybody else. If I hear somebody, I'll call them up if they want me to visit them or talk to them or take them out to lunch. I still do that, and I will continue as long as I'm here. Thank you.
God bless all the survivors and their families, and just keep fighting. Every one of us has been touched by cancer, this terrible disease in one way or another. And we have to show support for one another, and God bless those that do. And just know that I'm sure everyone is praying for all our survivors and those that are still going through treatments. And hopefully, one day, we will be cancer-free. But up until that day, thank God that we have each other to hold on to and to support each other. Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing October 23rd, 2025, as South Florida Mental Wellness Summit and Expo Day. Vice Mayor Wasserman, would you please read the proclamation into the record and present it to Simone Edwards and Elizabeth Lombardo, committee members for the South Florida Mental Wellness Summit and Expo.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas mental illness affects thoughts, feelings, behaviors, and general interaction with others, and the stigma associated with mental illness must be addressed so that no one feels shame or disgrace in seeking help and treatment. And whereas in response to the need for self-care and identifying and treating mental illness, a grassroots effort was undertaken by the principal, mental health providers in Broward County, including government, private sector, and nonprofit organizations, to join forces in a historic effort to increase awareness and education by holding a summit on October 23rd, 2025. And whereas the inaugural South Florida Mental Wellness Summit and Expo, titled "Resilience in Action: A Community Conversation on Mental Health," presented by Mental Health America of Southeast Florida, Aetna and Bristol-Myers Squibb bring together the leading mental health providers in South Florida to discuss and examine the current issues relating to mental health in Broward County affecting all populations. And whereas anyone wanting to learn about mental health and issues facing our communities, including healthcare providers, first responders, community leaders, business owners, elected officials, or simply concerned citizens, can get information, tools, and a better understanding of the challenges affecting mental health from the South Florida Mental Wellness Summit and Expo. And whereas by acknowledging the importance of mental wellness, we help the general public understand the issues surrounding mental illness and the challenges for the Coconut Creek community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Commission of the City of Coconut Creek, Florida hereby recognizes October 23rd, 2025, as South Florida Mental Wellness Summit and Expo Day, and remains committed to raising awareness in order to combat stigma and educate the Coconut Creek community about mental wellness. Signed by the mayor, vice mayor, the city commission, and attested by a city clerk?
And thank you so much for your work to bring this, to make everyone aware of this issue. Thank you. Okay. We will now have input from the public on non-agenda items. I remind everyone wishing to speak that all comments must pertain to city business. Respect and proper decorum will be maintained. Behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of this meeting, such as clapping, shouting, booing, and cheering, is not permitted. Any person who violates the decorum rules will be subject to removal from the commission chambers. City Clerk Kavanaugh, is there anyone who has signed in to speak on non-agenda items?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that's present that would like to speak at this point? Thank you. We will now move to the regular agenda. For a motion approving the minutes from previous city commission meetings, Is there a motion and a second? Move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Rydell. Are there any questions or comments from city commission at this time? Is there anyone in the public that would like to ask any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Number five, Resolution 2025-152. A resolution ratifying and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the attached collective bargaining agreement between the City of Coconut Creek and the Broward County Police Benevolent Association Police Officers Unit. Is there a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Rydell, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Are there any questions or comments from city commissioners? Commissioner Rydell?
Thank you. I'm going to speak. Pam, do you want to present on this before I speak?
Go ahead.
I'll defer. I mean...
I was just simply going to say, and I'll be brief, that this is one of three items. This is the officers' collective bargaining agreement, and then you'll be voting on the sergeants and the lieutenants as well. And sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Deputy City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, and everybody. And I have these fine gentlemen here to present as well. But the officers, sergeants, and lieutenants did all ratify their agreement through a vote last week. We had a lot of meetings during the summer to come to terms with this collective bargaining, these collective bargaining agreements for three-year terms. We had a very collaborative, respectful... I couldn't have, in my opinion, I couldn't have been happier with how everything went. And I really just, if I could, just take a moment to kind of give a shout out to the group, the members. Is that all right? I'd like to do that. Members of the labor team, Officers Art Patton, Officer Christian Solis, Sergeant Dan Eberle couldn't be here tonight, and Lieutenant Ryan Markin, I believe, is working a detail tonight, and PBA President Rod Skirvin, and they were also represented by PBA Legal Counsel Mike Braverman. And the members of the management team along with me were Deputy Police Chief Henry Cabrera, who is here in the back, and Deputy Director of HR and Risk Management Sanjeev Besheser. And I also, I mean, there were so many people behind the scenes to make this happen. So I also just wanted to thank City Manager Sheila Rose, Deputy City Manager Scott Stoudenmeyer, City Attorney Terrell Pyburn, Police Legal Advisor Jeanette Camacho, Police Chief Fred Hofer, Police Captains Cripplian, Shelton, and Fuentes, HR Manager and former payroll manager Priscilla Olmo, and the whole payroll team, who is now putting this all into place, Finance Director Peter Gay Lake, Benefits Program Manager Letitia Lawyer, and HR Business Partner Frank Zuniga. So many people were involved in this, and I do believe we came to a very good resolution that everybody can be proud of and will make our city even greater because we have these amazing police officers, sergeants, and lieutenants keeping us all safe. And I really thank these guys for all the work they put into it.
Great job. Thank you. Really an amazing job, and I don't see any bruises, so we're happy about that. So good job.
We all still love each other.
Great job. Everybody's smiling, so thank you. Commissioner Rydell.
Yes, thank you, Pam. I think something really significant, and I've sat up here through a number of these negotiations when it was, you know, they weren't all online, and now they're all online. And I will just say this, I think the definition of what I've always believed as an elected official in the city is we stand with our first responders. It's important to us to make sure that our first responders, and this isn't no, you know, it doesn't say anything about any other employee of the city, but our first responders, our police and our fire department, we never used to have to worry about that, which we now, I don't mean worry about it, but it's something we never conceptually had to do up until recently. Our police department was our pride and joy. It will always be our pride and joy, the officers that are here, the officers that love this city, the officers that work in this city. And they may forego the opportunity to be in a sheriff's department to do 1,000 different things, and they may forego a career in some sort of statewide agency to be here and to be in the community. So I'm glad you came to a negotiation, because I may not have been on the right side of it with you, Pam. But I say that because our officers deserve every single thing that we give them. They earn it. They own it, and they literally put, and it's what a compelling night to do that, where I know Sergeant Rena has left, but I remember, and Becky's still, I remember being in the hospital when he was shot. It's burned in my head that night. And that's the difference. So if any resident says something, or there's a post about something, the difference is the men and women that put on the Coconut Creek uniform in this city put their lives on the line every day. And we will always stand with you in making sure you're taken care of, not just, at least from my perspective, not only salary in terms of the benefits you have and the opportunities you have in the city. So I want to thank everybody for working at it, Pam. I want to thank you and the laundry list of credits you gave. I do want to take note of one thing. Sanjeev got like a, you got a different title now. Like, I know you have a different title, but cool little different title, you're not just the risk guy anymore, so congratulations on that. But I'm glad everyone came to this consensus. Mayor, thank you for letting me speak about it, and I'm just proud. I'm proud to be in a city that prioritizes public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. I think everyone echoes the same feelings. Commissioner Welsh.
Yes, thank you. So I won't repeat all the great things that Commissioner Rydell already mentioned. I love the beginning of the step plans. I think it provides increments for each one of our men and women in blue to grow within their level here in the officers' divisions specifically. And we were talking about the contributions for the pay, but also for the contributions towards your health, not just the benefits for the... Sorry, I lost my word. Medical health, but you're also the mental health. And that's always been a concern of mine, to make sure that the first responders have specific treatment and resources available to them that they feel good about. And I didn't realize until recently that the scandia that we're going to incorporate into our health plan has part of its leadership is Frank Babinek, so that was just another. But job well done on all sides. And Pam did say, this is not a discredit, Rod. Don't say that to any of the other negotiating teams, but that this was the best group to work with, not necessarily always seeing eye to eye, but just really coming to a good conclusion on behalf of everyone concerned. So, you know, hats off to everyone, and I really, really appreciate it. And we just want everyone to go home safe. That's all, at the end of the day, for what they do every day. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I won't repeat what my two colleagues said either, but I just want to say, you know, when local government is in a position to provide their first responders, their city employees, whoever, the agreement that you guys are getting right now, it's just a reflection on the city, the values, the ideals we hold. And I think Commissioner Rydell said it best, you know, we prioritize public safety. I mean, at the end of it, that's the root of everything. People want to go home and sleep well at night, and they do it because of you. And thank you for all you do, and you guys deserve this beyond, and you have full support. So thank you, guys. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody?
Now the handsome one. All right, first I want to say thank you for wearing your formal t-shirt. And, you know, I had to say something because you're standing next to Miami Vice over there.
I wasn't going to say it, Commissioner Brody, I, I bit my tongue, so I give you credit worth it.
This is a happy moment, so I'm going to take the moment to screw with you a little bit. So, so listen, from, from the last negotiation, this negotiation, negotiation was night and day. And I think we know why, I think we have great leadership that's in place now. I think that, I think the officers see that, I think the, the rank and files see that, I think they understand what, what an opportunity it is to hear, to work at Coconut Creek. I'm going to tell you, every time I walk into a room and there's a Coconut Creek police officer, it's like seeing family, you know, get the hugs and, you know, and it's good to see that we had this great negotiation, because that's kind of what I expect from, from the people that work in the city, is this great camaraderie that we can work together and get through these issues and make sure we're looking out for the best for all of us. For me, it's always been a great thing, I've been here since 97. You know, I remember when, when Larry Christopher was, you know, two Larry Christifers in one suit, that's how long I've been here. So...
Ouch.
So, you know, it was, it's awesome to see everybody and, you know, having every...
What is it, Bob? Why is it supposed to be here?
Oh, it's on recording, you can record it. I'm sure one of you guys will send it to him. I mean, you'll have to have a 10-year-old download it for him. But, you know, I really appreciate everything you guys do out there. You know, it's nice to be able to, when you talk about Coconut Creek, everybody says positive things about our, our first responders. And I think that goes to, you know, A, leadership in the city, and leadership within the departments, and that goes a long way. And I even think that, you know, the way our PBA represents us is in a positive manner, you know, it's, it's great to have Rod that came out of our own police department now, you know, as a PBA. It shows great leadership that comes out of this police department and what we actually grow, and, you know, we had a speed bump, but we're over it, and, and it shows the growth in, in the last three years. And, you know, I appreciate you guys, I appreciate you not pulling me over mostly, but, you know, I appreciate everything you guys do, you put your life out there for us to save my, my community, my family, my friends, so, you know, keep doing the job, you guys certainly deserve this, and I'm, I'm so glad that it went so smooth. I got zero phone calls, I said on the record there, Pam, zero phone calls in the last year from this police department, so that says great for the leadership, says great for where we're at, and, and in this world of our, our PDs. I think everybody involved in this, it really means a lot to me and my family. So you guys, thank you very much, and, and enjoy all the stuff, and keep protecting us.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager Stoudemeyer?
Thank you, mayor. Just, just very briefly, Pam, you did such a great job recognizing everybody that got this over the finish line, but I think one of the unsung heroes in there was, was from our city clerk's office, who, who helped with each and every meeting, and that's Danielle Noack.
You were very right, and I thought about that right after, I was like, ooh, I missed her, I missed her.
No, so just a bit...
It's her birthday coming up in a couple days. It's her birthday almost.
Thank you, Danielle. Honestly, she, 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 she was here for all of it, and she helped work magic with making this room available when we needed it to.
In all aspects, thank you. Thank you, Danielle, for everything. I have to say, every one of us has said it all, there isn't much to say, just that how extremely proud we are of Coconut Creek, Coconut Creek's first responders, Coconut Creek's staff. You just make us look so good, and we're so proud to be a part of this, and thank you so much for everything you do, and just, God bless, and stay safe, that every one of you stay safe. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments that's present? Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Yes.
Mayor Riley?
Yes.
Thank you. One down, two to go.
There you go. Number six, a resolution 2025-156. A resolution ratifying and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the attached collective bargaining agreement between the city of Coconut Creek and the Broward County Police Benevolent Association Police Sergeants Unit. Is there a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Rydell, seconded by Commissioner Welsh and Vice Mayor Wasserman. Okay, Pam, do you have anything to say?
I have nothing additional. This is for the sergeants this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, any questions from commission? Okay, thank you. Anyone present that would like to comment? Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Yes.
Mayor Riley?
Yes. Number seven, Resolution 2025-157. A resolution ratifying and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the attached collective bargaining agreement between the city of Coconut Creek and the Broward County Police Benevolent Association Police Lieutenants Unit. Is there a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second. Moved by Vice Mayor Wasserman, seconded by Commissioner Welsh. Pam?
Nothing additional.
Nothing? Okay, great. Are there any questions or comments from commission? Anyone in the public that would like to state, make a statement? Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Yes.
Mayor Riley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Ms. Mayor, can I have a word?
Yes, Rod, please.
Ms. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, commission, city officials. It would be very disrespectful, I didn't once again applaud Pam on what a gem this city has found when they found Pam Kershaw. She is phenomenal. You know, I sit down at so many cities to negotiate these contracts, and I can't tell you what a difference Coconut Creek is from the other cities or agencies. It's night and day for most. You have a city right next door that totally disrespects their officers, and although we don't always get exactly what we want, we definitely get what we need, and we get most of what we, we feel we need but are asking for. And that's due to our great relationship that we have, our working relationship, and the respect that you all have for our men and women that go out there every day and lay their lives on the line for you and the citizens of Coconut Creek. And Commissioner Rydell hit the nail right on the head when he brought up what a night to ratify these contracts and vote on them, than to have Sergeant Rena be promoted tonight, someone who was shot in the line of duty that we, you know, you have a tendency to think that'll never happen in Coconut Creek. Yet we had Parkland right next door, and I was in a class with Art all day today, a seminar on a shooting out in San Bernardino. But, you know, Parkland is always brought up at every one of those mass shooting classes, and that's right next door. So at any given time, we had Sergeant Rika, you know, right in, right outside our border in Pompano, get shot and killed. Those are very impactful things to us, and we just want to say thank you for recognizing the dangers that the men and women in Coconut Creek face every day. You know, they come as 19, 20, 21-year-old bright-eyed, bushy-tailed kids, like everybody else, unless, you know, people like me and Art, they came out of military, we're a little jaded at that time, but, you know, with a go-get-'em attitude, they leave broken, mentally depressed, and very cynical. Yet if you ask them if they'd do it again, they'd do it all over again. And that's the kind of men and women you have working for you in Coconut Creek in this police department. And thank you for recognizing that, and I just want to say it's been a pleasure. And this might be my last one, if, if all goes well, this will be my last one, so I had to give the speech to tell you how much I appreciate working with you all. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rod.
Rod, if you come back for another one, could it be in an all-white linen suit?
Looking good, Rod. City Attorney Pyburn, please.
Thank you, Mayor Riley. Ordinance number 2025-49, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Coconut Creek, Florida, amending the city's code of ordinances by amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Departments, Division 2, Police Department, Section 2-57, Use of Off-Duty Police Officers or Police Service Aides for Unofficial Functions, to update fees for the use of off-duty police officers and police service aides, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. This item is before you at this time for first reading, and we have our Public Safety Advisor Jeanette Camacho here to make the report.
Good evening, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, deputy city attorney, city attorney, deputy city manager, and city clerk. We're here now that you, the collective bargaining agreement, we have a new collective bargaining agreement, we had to make some changes to our detail rates. As you can see, our regular rate went from police officer, police service aide from $60 to $70, supervisors went from 70 to 80, and then on holiday rates, we went from $75 to $85, and our supervisors are getting paid $90 to $100, so everything went up $10. And that's the only change that we've made.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Welsh, seconded by Commissioner Brody. Okay, are there any questions from the city commission? No? Okay. Anyone present? Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Yes.
Mayor Riley?
Yes. Thank you, Jeanette. Resolution 2025-155. A resolution authorizing the use of federal law, of federal law enforcement trust funds in the amount of $28,000 from the Federal Forfeiture Justice Fund for the purchase of an Axon Loki 2 drone starter kit, Axon Signa ground robot starter kit, Axon ground control system starter kit, Axon Loki 2 spare parts kit, Axon PT tactical bag, Axon P7 Signian pouch, a sign, I don't know how that one is pronounced, Axon P7 Loki pouch, Axon Sky Hero Operator Certification, Certification Course, Truck Vault Drone Responder 7, and a Samsung 27-inch monitor.
Move it.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Rydell, seconded by Commissioner Brody. Okay, Chief Hoffa?
Great job, great job, explaining that.
Thank you.
So I think the, the item list is self-explanatory. However, I did want to point out that this is, this purchase is, does not cost taxpayers any money, this comes out of the trust fund, and it'll give us an opportunity to update our SWAT team, Special Weapons and Tactics team, to current industry standards, and give an opportunity to keep our officers in safer, safer way, and send, send this equipment in before then. Do you guys have any questions?
Terrific, thank you. Anyone have any questions? No. From what I understand, chief, is that this could be low-flying drone as well, to go under beds, to look under cars, or wherever it has to go.
You're correct. Wherever somebody may hide, yes.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
And when, one other item I did want to point out, when, when the, we purchase, make the purchase, and the training is all complete, and the team's up to par on how to use everything, we can provide demonstrations as well.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to ask a question or make a statement? Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Yes.
Mayor Riley?
Yes. Thank you. Number 10, a motion authorizing the city manager or designee to approve the purchase and installation of new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC units to replace the existing units at Fire Station 50 with Master Mechanical Services, Inc., pursuant to RFP number 02-23-22-10. Is there a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Rydell, seconded by Vice Mayor Welsh, I mean Vice Mayor Wasserman. Thank you. Okay, public work staff, thank you, Harry.
Hi, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. The existing HVAC units of Fire Station 50 have surpassed their useful life and need to be replaced. The system was installed with the fires, when the fire station was constructed. Unfortunately, they're not that old, but they have, we have experienced numerous problems with it over the last few years. And it was designed and produced as a joint venture between Carrier and Toshiba. Unfortunately, that joint venture has dissolved, parts, controls, nor technical assistance is available at this time. So we're looking to replace the unit. This type of system is more labor-intensive to replace because there's, there's two separate condensing units, and then there's 23 individual air handling units throughout the building. The system's also tied in and integrated into the fire alarm system and energy management system. The $445,000 proposal is an estimate based on the current market pricing for the, for the equipment, and an estimate on how long it's going to take. Master Mechanical, under their agreement, bills us the actual cost plus 10% of the parts and materials used, and they also only bills for the actual hours used. The initial $440,000 is the proposal, based on their best estimate at this time. We're fairly confident it's going to come in at or under budget. And that's all I have, if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rydell?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you, Harry, for giving me some clarity earlier. I think what, if anyone parsected Scott, ironically, from yesterday, so thank you for that. If anyone heard one of the statements he made, is when this was originally designed approved, there was a, a joint enterprise for two different companies to do something pretty high, high-end and high, for their thinking, that's since dissolved. So it was pretty, it was something that was exciting then, that saved us a lot of money on the build-out. The other thing that I think is really significant, when I, when, I know we toured 50 when it was built, and then when it was before built, is the air handlers in the rooms was actually the, was, was really to firemen specs, which was best practices at the time. So I just, I really appreciate just the clarity with this, because this is something in my head that I was like, hey, we're nine years in doing a whole full-tilt system, but needs to happen, it's happening with the industry standard of a company that's not going anywhere. Fully support the, the item tonight. Thank you for the clarity, and again, this is something that's going to give, and really some of the specs of 50 are going to be imposed in 113 in the admin building, so, and that we were like 10 years ahead of the time then to what now has become industry standard. So thank you for the clarity, Harry, I have nothing further. I do support the item this, this evening.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes, thank you very much. And the warranty will be even more significant to cover the cost of the purchase to replace the HVAC that's currently there, right?
Yes, the, with the manufacturer warranties, the parts and materials for 10 years, and Master Mechanical's standard warranty is one year for the installation.
And they're here tonight?
They are here tonight.
So that was good. And I was concerned about the temporary air while things were being moved in and out, but...
It, it won't be perfect, we won't have the 65 degrees that the firemen love, but we are able to keep the building cool with spot coolers, there's two different systems, for the first, one for the first floor, one for the second floor. So we will have to move things around, juggle around, but we're confident we'll keep them as comfortable as possible through the process.
I was thinking about that, Cynthia, they have the two-story configuration, we don't want any cranky fire rescue folks, right? Commissioner, Captain Blizzard, Fire Chief Blizzard. Anyway, thank you.
They had to put up an awful lot, as this has gone down over the last couple of years, so this will be welcome.
Thank you. I'm sure they'll be happy with the new unit. It's worth the sacrifice. Thank you. Any other questions, any further questions? Anyone from the public? Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Yes.
Mayor Riley?
Yes. Thank you, Harry. Okay, thank you. Miss, yeah, Commissioner Rydell, please. Comments? Comments? No, I'm sorry, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. First, and most importantly, birthday wishes to both Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Brody, I believe. Commissioner Welch celebrates on the 12th, and Commissioner Brody on the 17th. Happiest of birthdays. And Danielle. Enjoy your days. Secondly, I believe that Sheila was slated to provide an update on the e-bike coordinates at this meeting. The update that I'll provide this evening is that we're still working on it. We need to have more meetings internally on this. It would not be brought forward at the next commission meeting. The earliest anything would be brought forward would be in the November meeting. We do have some meetings on the calendar, the last of which is when the city manager is back in town. Of course, she is out of town for two weeks. So, again, the earliest would be November, and we are still working on it, and we are still meeting on it. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, Pyler.
Thank you, Mayor Riley. I will echo the birthday sentiments. Happy birthday, Commissioner Welch, and happy birthday, Commissioner Brody, and also to Danielle.
You better shout out to your staff as well, because your staff has a birthday in October, so...
Yes, I know that.
I want to clean that up for you there, darling.
Thank you. Happy birthday to Cassie back there.
So, just, you're welcome, Cass.
I'm aware, sorry. I was just thinking of the next week, but we'll go ahead with two weeks out, since it is before the city commission meeting, the next city commission meeting. Also, I just wanted to mention that today, the mayor signed the closing documents for Main Street for the land swap. They will be held in escrow until the closing, which is scheduled for next week. Right now, it's scheduled for October 15th, but if for some reason that doesn't happen, their outside date is Friday, October 17th. So, we'll keep you updated there. And then, I was asked to just mention that we are currently following House Bill 64 for the next legislative session, which proposes to clarify the open carry laws that have recently changed in light of the case of McDaniel's versus State. And that bill is being filed by Representative Honchowski. It's our understanding that there is no special session scheduled to address this, according to her aide, William, who Bernadette and I spoke with earlier today. But it will come up, and it's going to be filed for the regular session. If we learn anything else on that, we'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Rydell.
Yeah, I get that the open carry is a big thing. I was working, I was at the Margate Commission meeting yesterday, and they staffed it a little differently as well, kind of like what we're staffing here, which, I mean, I don't love it. I don't love being flanked by two police officers. I'm just telling you the truth. I mean, I think, Fred, that's up to you, security of the commission. I'm not going to speak to my colleagues, but, you know, we're in a different day and age. So, I guess we'll deal with it accordingly. I'm just going to give a brief solid waste update. We had our first solid waste meeting after the governing meeting this past week. It was, tensions flared over cost. And the root issue on rolling it back is if the member cities are not okay with, like, here's the reality. Are we okay increasing what we're going to be charging people? The answer is, I think, this commission, I don't want to speak for everybody, is probably yes, to be better in the long run and save money. Pretty easy answer to add things of, you know, yard waste recycling, increased recycling, single-stream recycling. Some of these cities don't want to do it. So, it's really, we're in tenuous water. They rolled back from getting firm commitments financially, and what it's going to look like to being more, we'll call it vague, but it's going to be a transparent process. I'm going to be bringing some data back at the end of the year to educate all of you better on what solid waste looks like. So, I just want to keep you updated on that. The other parlay thing is, I know we potentially have a, it's not an issue because we're not out for bid yet, we potentially have a renewal on with Republic. I had a long conversation with, with Harry's here today and Mike, in terms of my thoughts on renewing a contract with Republic. Republic's seeking a five-year extension. I have no problem saying that. By contract, can do it, so it's not inappropriate for me to talk about it. I have serious questions at this point of if that's going to be in compliance with what we're moving forward to doing with the Solid Waste Authority. I have serious issues whether it's going to be in the best interest of our city in terms of where we can go, and even if the Solid Waste Authority goes forward. So, I have another meeting scheduled with Harry and Mike to discuss that. But obviously, we could all make that decision globally, but I'm really diving in of how a contract renewal will work in conjunction with who our vendor is, and how long that vendor agreement would be, if this all works out. So, it's just something I'm being hypercritical on. You know, things that I think are significant that I'll just share with you all is, the largest commodity that we're missing out on is cardboard. So, I mean, I think probably fair to say, all of you, you drive down your street on a bulk day, how much cardboard do you see? It's disgusting.
That's a significant amount, yes.
And listen, I break it up with the girls, and we go to Winston Park, and we put it in there. Most people don't do that. So, something I stress to them today is that we have to do something with that on a commodity stream. If the Solid Waste Authority goes forward, you're going to see yard waste being sectioned out, meaning your palm fronds and your shrubberies are going to go independent pile, and independent trucks are going to come at it. So, these are considerations that need to go into any renegotiated contract, whether we choose to put it out for bid or not. I just want to keep you all apprised of the conversations I'm having in conjunction, not with our own contract, because it's our own business, but how that's going to segue into Solid Waste Authority.
Can I ask if you're having discussions either way, if we're moving forward, and then if we're not?
Yeah, I'll defer that to our acting city manager and our city manager, because there's other considerations that go into that, but it's a big global conversation of how we're going to move forward, and what moving forward looks like for probably our biggest vendor contract. So, it's unique, to say the least. I want to thank city staff for lighting up the lake pink.
Yeah.
I want to thank city staff for doing, I don't get choked up often, but for doing the proclamation this evening, especially with everything going on. I know we have some events coming up, and we've got a majority of the week next week, and I didn't get a chance to say this last week, but Commissioner Brody, anything you need. Anything you need. That's all I have.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you, Commissioner Rydell, for the update on the, I did see we've got a November 16, I think it's November 16, combined meeting.
I just want to say this, because I'm going to ask for your help, and I apologize for cutting you off.
And I will be there.
Next week, Friday, is an executive board meeting. Now, Mike and Harry attend. Harry, I'm going to ask you to attend that one, only because I'm not going to be there. It's not a robust agenda, but if you want to attend virtually, I regrettably got called into federal court in Houston, so I'm going to be out of time next week. But that's going to be the first one I'm missing. But it's not the most robust agenda, but I am going to be missing.
I did look at it.
So, if you can attend, I would appreciate it.
I'll do my best, and now that they're giving links appropriately, right?
We got that. So, I didn't mean to cut you off, Commissioner, but I'm going to be missing that, so I want staff to know, Sheila to know, so we can have a better attendance, because usually, I'm much more on top of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I attended the Cocon Mar Water District meeting, and of course, Randall Blanchett is our representative, and there were some very robust discussions. We may need some of us to go to, reach out to the county commissioners to ensure that Cocon Mar Water District budget is very clear on having, projecting the funds that are needed to protect our city and our waterways in their responsibilities. And Randall even offered to work with the, because they have an interim leadership right now, so I don't know if the job has been filled. The interim was posting for it, but their budget just didn't make sense even to a novice. They're not including the past actual charges, and forecasting, and working very much as being reactive rather than proactive on our behalf. I mean, there's no one there from Margate, but, you know, shame on them for not participating, but we are. And we just may need to reach out to our county commissioners to ensure that they are aggressive in asking for the funds to make sure that we are covered. So, thanks for that. I did bring up at the chamber legislative meeting this morning, I didn't get to meet with Bernadette beforehand, but about Rep. Honchowski's bill that she filed to add clarity to the open carry regarding the long guns. And I wasn't able to log on by my laptop, so I was on my phone, and I wasn't able, it was crickets, like I got no reaction whatsoever. So, Bernadette was able to see them all. I'm anxious to see what their expressions were, because there was literally nothing, which you can translate one way or the other. But I know that we are very much aggressively looking at it. And I'm not going to talk about that. I did speak to Harry earlier, because at the Atlantic Tactical SAC meeting, they were talking about partnering with Fort Lauderdale and their Public Works Department for training in their water treatment areas. And so, I didn't bring it up at the meeting, but I'm anxious, because I know we tried this before, when a former Public Works Director from Margate tried to bring that kind of training into play before. And I'd like to see how they are utilizing that, if they're utilizing their own staff, or are they counting on Fort Lauderdale to provide their own staffing? I think we probably would look, maybe look at it for the future, but certainly not now. I believe our staff has got well more on their list of things to do in the upcoming year than they can participate in. But I just thought it was interesting that it has resurrected its head, and hopefully we can keep our eyes on it.
We can meet internally and discuss that.
Okay. And the last thing that I'll end on is, all of you have a "Be Civil" button that I brought back. I know Commissioner Brody was very happy about it, not, kindly kidding, but I did, and thank you very much for giving me the consensus to attend the inaugural, and it was not Project Civility, it was Project Civility, which brings on a whole 'nother connotation of what the summit could actually participate in. I'm getting crickets from you, too. I can see that. But it was very interesting. There were 17 states that participated, two countries, and it wasn't political, it wasn't faith-driven, it was people from all walks of life, think tanks, like I said, electeds from across the country, business owners. It was just a well-diverse population that participated, and the basis of it was differing opinions, coming to, having civil conversations, not always to agree, but having those conversations in a civil manner. And I was, I would like to get feedback from each one of you, if any one of you, or all of you, would like to participate in a small exercise just for us.
Why not?
Okay.
Not right now?
No, not right now. Of course, not right now.
Can we get a little more clarity on that?
Well, that's, I didn't want to pursue it, Commissioner Rydell, by those that put on this civil engagement project, until I realized whether any of you were interested in it or not, because the councilman from Carmel, Indiana, is the one that fully rolled it out, not only into his board, but throughout the entire city, and made it, it was an entire movement of this city of 100,000. And then it just morphed into surrounding cities, and then a county, and I don't know that we need to be that aggressive. I just think that any, if there, because there were exercises that they utilized just for small groups, such as ours, and nothing heavy, nothing long, but I just wanted to find out, before I go out and ask for one of those, if there's an interest here.
So, I fully support civility. I fully support kindness and being a good neighbor. I don't necessarily think, if this is a non-cost thing, I'm all in.
Okay.
All in. If you're telling me we're going to, you know, pay somebody to come in to say, say please, say thank you, hold doors?
No.
I'm not, I don't need to do that.
No, I wouldn't be interested in that either.
Okay.
But just a little bit about the city, because I thought it was Carmel, whoever.
I don't mean to be disingenuous with that. I just, I think, you know, I'm not a big fan of bringing in trainers to tell us how to do our job and things like that.
You were very civil in your answer, so I think...
I would think at this point, and I would hope at this point, we all know how to be civil. It's just a matter of practicing.
Yes, and it is just...
And having an exercise about reinforcing it.
But I will say this. I've been to three different commissions in the past month. Those commissions probably need civility training. This commission doesn't need civility training. Does the community, could it benefit from kindness and things like that? There's a lot of movements out there. Kindness 365, there's things we have in our community that are for it. Sandy, it's free, I'm all in.
Okay. All right, thank you. But I just, a point of trivia about this city, which was north of Indianapolis, it is 100,000. Their claim to fame is they have over 150 roundabouts. Very few traffic lights, so it was quite...
Welcome to Parkland.
And not only that, I was like, well, we had to fight long and hard to get one in Main Street, but it was a very interesting and well-worthwhile summit, and I thank you for allowing me to travel to get that and agreeing to this little exercise.
Love it.
And thanks for the birthday wishes.
Happy 45th.
Plus.
Commissioner Brody.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to everybody who's reached out to me over the last two weeks. I appreciate it. It's not been easy, obviously. And I guess everybody's seen the article. The article, just for a little reference of why the article was written in the first place, it was more or less, just to let you know, if I'm in a really bad mood, don't take it personal. I've got a lot going on. So, that was really kind of the...
We won't see a difference, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, you know. I am who I am. Me and Popeye.
We're going with you.
But, you know, I appreciate everybody reaching out, and, you know, Josh has been wonderful, reaching out every other day and going, you're okay. So, I appreciate that. It does matter. There's days that I want to throw-punch people, and those days, I just want to make sure you guys understand it's not personal. I won't throw-punch you, by the way, but I just wanted to let you know, my emotions are on my sleeve.
Civility.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I'm kind of not on board with this yet, because I'm going through stuff. But, you know...
Timing was off.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit. So, I want to thank everybody for reaching out. Thanks for the well wish. I walked in my office, and it was like a big birthday party in there, so I appreciate that. This is the year I stopped counting, so I don't get any older from here on out. So, I appreciate it, and, you know, I want everybody to have a wonderful weekend ahead of them. I will, I just found out that my kids bought tickets for me for the Dolphin Charger game, so I will be over there trash-talking the Miami Dolphins.
Don't think it's anybody's bad luck.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody's going to show up. They'll all be at home crying about Tua, and they missed out on opportunity on Herbert, so I'll make sure I bring, make sure I bring that to their attention. So, thank you very much, everybody, and, you know, next week's going to be a rough week, so I find a bunch of stuff out, get some tests done. So, stay tuned for the next saga of this crap that I got to deal with. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Thank you, Mayor, and as I wasn't present at the last meeting, but I know we talked before, but, yeah, full support as well, man. You know, I love you. So, no, just real quick, I was at the South Creek meeting last week. I got to give a shout-out to Dan Hobbie. I mean, just an awesome guy. He really took the reins of that organization. It started off on rocky footing, and he's just been super, and he's just a stellar individual who's trying to do good for the South Creek community. You know, there was always talk about, if it's an HOA, you know, no, this is bad, don't do this, you know, and they've really turned a corner, that it's really a community organization. I think Becky could speak to it, too, that's just trying to, you know, help the community and do what they can to, you know, to do good. I mean, that's it. They talked about Public Art Fund for, I know I mentioned to Scott, maybe, you know, they talked about the cable boxes or the electrical boxes, maybe jazzing those up a little bit. Also, the monuments at the front, I know some of them touch private property, do they not? You know, maybe doing a deep dive on that as well. So, that'd be great. That's something that they were inquiring about. And that's it. So, looking forward to Monster Mash. Super excited for Monster Mash. That'll be just before our last meeting of the month, if I'm not mistaken. So, very excited. I know it's going to be, I mean, I'm a Halloween guy, so I'm ready to rock. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Happy birthday, happy, happy, healthy birthday to Sandy, John, Danielle, Cassie, the whole staff that has birthdays in October, really. God bless. John, anything you need, anytime you want to pick up the phone. John had bladder cancer, he was stage four, and that was 14 years ago. And it's not an easy journey, but know there's light at the end of the tunnel, and know that we're here for you, to support you, anything, anytime of day. Okay? Had some fun things this week. Monarch High School had their first homecoming parade and powder puff game. The enthusiasm of the kids is just, if you're feeling down, that's all you have to do is surround yourself with teenagers and young ones. It really is amazing. And I do have to say, I've been to JA this week, ATC, FIL, and we've had discussions about internship programs and wanting to be involved in the community, and so I would like to explore that, to see in what ways and how we can involve them in the community, in the communities and in the city, in events and however we can welcome them, and they can actually feel a part of the city and that they are contributing. Also, we've, I met with the chamber, and we actively, I am going to take it upon myself to try to actively get out there and engage some of our businesses and especially the larger businesses in Coconut Creek, so we can have a bigger seat at the table, so to speak.
Yeah, the chamber is very effective for Coconut Creek businesses.
So the business, I don't think the business is actually realized, I'm not going there. But there are, there are things that the chamber can contribute with legislation and every, it's, we should be more involved, because we have a great partnership with Coral Springs Chamber as well, so it is...
Coral Springs, Coconut Creek.
Coconut Creek and Coral Springs Chamber. Thank you. Okay. I don't remember mocking you when you were giving your report. Thanks. But there isn't much else to say, except thank you again, Pam. Chiefs, thank you. Amazing bargaining. Just, I'm sure everyone's happy that we've come to these agreements, and Main Street, couldn't be thrilled that, thank you again, staff, amazing job. You guys are the ones that really did the heavy lifting over all these years, and it's just great to know we've taken the next step, and congratulations, really, job well done on all counts. And that's all I've got. I think we do have, no, we have to remind it, nobody has said this. Commissioner Brody, and are you as well, Josh Rydell, Commissioner Rydell, are going to be locked up on Sunday. Right? It's tomorrow's...
I don't want to interrupt you, Mayor, if you want me to, you're Commissioner Brody to talk about it.
Are you going to be locked up?
If I may, Mayor?
You do remember we were talking about civility earlier on? I do remember that.
Yeah, I have the button up. It says I'm civil.
Okay, I thought so, but...
If I may, but I...
So Tomorrow's Rainbow is locking you guys up.
Mayor, I defer to Commissioner Brody, who's on the board.
Commissioner Brody, and yes, and he is on the board of Tomorrow's Rainbow, and we will be there to support you as well. Anything else before we adjourn?
Donate.
Donate. Keep them in there for a while, though. Don't make it too easy.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.